My way.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
If you'll please remain standing, if you choose, bow your heads for the Lord's Prayer. Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come, thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us, and lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. Thank you all.
Okay, our next public workshop will be Tuesday, August thirteenth, ten thirty a.m. Our next regular meeting will be Wednesday, August fourteenth, at ten thirty a.m., both in this room. Madam Clerk.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Here.
Ms. Frenchco.
Here.
Mr. Malloy.
Here.
Item number one is to dispense with reading the minutes of the workshop session dated July twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-four, and the regular meeting dated July twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-four, and accept and approve the video recordings of both meetings as the official meeting minutes.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
No.
Item number two is to dispense with reading the minutes of the workshop session dated July thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-four, and the regular meeting dated July thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-four, and accept and approve the video recordings of both meetings as the official meeting minutes.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
No.
Item number three is to dispense with reading the minutes of the special meeting dated August first, two thousand and twenty-four, and accept and approve the video recording of the meeting as the official meeting minutes.
Motion to approve.
Second motion.
And then, um, for discussion, I just, I just wanted to be known because I don't know that the board actually has ever gone back and listened to the meeting minutes before, but whenever, um, the president is talking over other people, you can't hear what the board members are saying.
They can't hear you right now, Commissioner.
That's one of the require, what you just did right there.
Right, they can't hear you, so it doesn't matter if I'm talking over you, they can't hear you.
Actually.
Please speak into the microphone.
Again, the only way you can take video or audio minutes in lieu of, um, written minutes is if you can hear everyone while they're talking who's an, who's a member of the board. So when you're talking over, and I listened to this last, yesterday, I was listening for information on something, I went back and listened to a meeting, and you could not hear, um, me talking when you were talking, you're talking over people makes the meeting minutes invalid. And, and I just want you guys to be aware of that, there's only, that's the only condition in which you can do that is if every, everyone can be heard, you're announcing the names and it's transcribed properly. So for, for those reasons, I really would appreciate if the board would, uh, make sure that they're transcribed properly because YouTube doesn't do that, there's a lot of misinformation if you go and look at those, and, uh, you cannot hear to be able to identify who's talking. That's why it's required that people say their names first, and that doesn't happen at any of our regular meetings. So I just wanted to, you know, go on the record and say that I'm trying again, uh, to make sure that you guys correct those things.
Can you please turn off your fan if you're not using?
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry.
Okay, so for item number three, Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Uh, yes.
It's not on.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
You're just, um, no.
Item number four is to approve the bills.
A motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Item number five is to transfer monies.
A motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Um. They didn't, because they didn't give enough information about that, I'm gonna say, no.
Item number six is to approve additional appropriations.
A motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Item number seven is to approve transfer of appropriations.
A motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Item number eight is to adopt a resolution approving the submitted list labeled as O R C five seven zero five point four one D, June two thousand and twenty-four, of purchase orders to the various vendors as then and now purchase orders in compliance with O R C five seven zero five point four one D.
A motion to approve.
Second that.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Item number nine is to adopt the alternative tax budget of Trumbull County, Ohio, for the fiscal year beginning January first, two thousand and twenty-five. Authorize Danny Malloy, President of the Board of Trumbull County Commissioners, to sign alternative tax budget and submit the same to the Trumbull County Budget Commission.
Motion to approve.
Second that.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Um, because the adopted, um, alternative tax budget has, uh, doesn't have an, or will have a negative end and, um, and we didn't have any input and there's no budget control, just like I've been saying all along, I'm gonna say no.
Motion passes. Number ten.
Item number ten, to adopt the updated Trumbull County Capital Asset Policy dated seven thirty-one twenty-four as submitted by the Trumbull County Auditor's Office.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Um, because it's missing some essential elements such as the administrator, I'm kind of a, no.
Again, motion passes, number eleven.
Item number eleven is to accept with gratitude the bequest of Ms. Roberta Liverini for use by the Trumbull County Dog Warden and Trumbull County Dog Pound, and to authorize Danny Malloy, President of the Board of Trumbull County Commissioners, to execute all documents necessary to accept the bequest on behalf of Trumbull County and the Trumbull County Dog Warden.
A motion to approve.
Second motion.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Item number twelve is to approve change order number one and final with Carrilla Contractors, Inc. for Part One, T R U first, two thousand and twenty-three, Countywide Road Improvements Project, County Highway one oh five, South Canal Street Drainage Upgrade Project, in the amount of fifty-one thousand, two hundred and eighty-eight dollars and ninety-six cents, revising the total contract amount to three hundred forty-three thousand, five hundred and seventy-nine dollars and ninety-six cents. Change order number one and final is necessary to adjust the contract to reflect the final quantities of the project.
Make a motion to approve.
Second that.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Item number thirteen is to concur with the county engineer to grant the special annual supplier fleet permit for fleet vehicles requested by the company listed, and that company is Hard Knocks E N T, Inc.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Item number fourteen is to concur with the county engineer to close the following roadway, Braceville Robinson Road, County Highway one fourteen B and C, located in Braceville Township, closing, uh, location between State Route Five and State Route eighty-two for the Braceville Community Foundation five K Fun Run Walk Race Event, closing date August seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-four, closing time, eight a.m. to twelve p.m., noon. Recommended detour west on State Route Five, north on State Route five thirty-four, east on State Route eighty-two.
Motion to approve.
Second that.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Item number fifteen is to approve the personnel action for the employment of Ms. Mimosa Long to the position of custodian, pay ra, at pay range three, zero years, fourteen forty-five per hour with the Maintenance Department, effective Monday, August twelfth, two thousand and twenty-four.
A motion to approve.
Second that.
Discussion. I, I still don't, you know, based on what I'm looking at, I, it looks, it's interesting, to say the least. There's a spreadsheet that doesn't really show much of anything, there's no verification that the other, um, candidates who have years of building maintenance and floor care and custodial experience and years, years of, um, general cleaning experience, um, were not contacted, I, I'm, I'm curious as to why, um, this person has already completed a pre-employment screening and background check, it's as if they've already been handpicked, and then when I go and look at the qualifications, which weren't submitted last week, um, the experiences in veterinary care and, um, and cosmetology, so when you look at the hobbies, um, you know, shooting sport activities and things like that, but it doesn't say anything about cleaning, I'm just wondering, I just wonder why the other people who, who based on even the inadequate spreadsheet have more years of experience, aren't being considered because I don't trust this process. It says no shows or no callbacks or interviews took place. I just, there's no verification of communication, there's not an email to the person who's the most qualified, it's just, they're trying to create qualifications where they don't appear to exist, and it, and, and to my eyes, it just looks like it might be, um, someone that someone knows, but that's just my, that's just from, if anyone were to look at it and see the candidates who had years in custodial experience and wonder why they're hiring someone who is a cosmetologist, it just doesn't seem to make sense, but anyway, go ahead and.
Commissioner, do you realize this is the lowest paying job we have in the county? And this is, out of the six people that were interviewed, three of them didn't even show up for the interview or call back when they were asked to interview because it says right there on the sheet in front of you.
Because it says on the sheet in front of you, there's no, there's no phone log, there's no email.
Do you, do you want a videotape of our person calling them? I mean, are you, are you serious right now?
Actually, I, I am serious, I don't, I don't trust this process, I know the reason why Alex Divengensi was placed there, um, in order to, you know, because the previous one, her, when her father was there, was for the county, they, that's where they brought people in in maintenance, and they get their, they move their way up. I mean, Morrow acknowledged to me after I started here that everyone takes turns hiring and I.
That is not true, that is not true.
So you think being a cosmetologist is a, is a degraded job that doesn't qualify them to be able to clean a building?
But sure, this is a custodial position.
Right, I understand that, and, and the custodial positions are where people bring, people are brought in and then they bid on other jobs in the county. That, everyone knows that that's how Trumbull County.
You are making wild accusations again without any basis of fact, let's move on, please.
Okay, for item fifteen, Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Um, because this is, uh, lacking proper information to show that those listed as having more experience truly weren't interested in the job, um, I'm going to abstain because there's not enough information here.
Um, I don't think you need to, but if you'd like to, you can.
Good morning, Commissioners, I just would like to ask one thing, Commissioner Frenchco, for every other person that you do hire, do you ask for these same things? No, you don't, we give you the same grid for every single position that you hire, so you are contradicting yourself, also, you are saying.
You know what, sit down, because it's not your, you don't just get to come, and Danny, shame on you for just inviting people to come up and criticize.
She has to speak, I'm sure, she's our H R director.
Right, and she shouldn't be, and she knows that.
You continue to attack people's character and talk over them.
Do you realize that you were put on a board to take care for our hourly gig when you had two restraining orders in the past? And a domestic violence conviction, do you realize that?
Point of order, it's true, so either way, this has nothing to do with what's going on, we have a person who was brought into the county for the per, your job, when you came to the county, you were pulled up because they, I will point if I want, they, they re, they re.
But you're being out of line, I remember, I remind you.
They reduced, they reduced the job qualifications in order to pull you up.
I just want to make sure you understand.
And that's what happened.
People were called, all of these people.
Right.
Out of experience, no offense, Commissioner, but a lot of people who have twelve years of building maintenance experience don't want to come bank forty dollars and forty-five cents.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, so the grids here was provided to all you Commissioners.
Right.
We do call everybody.
And before you were here, I used to get copies of everything, and now with it, you're here, I don't, I barely get anything, unless, unless we ask for it, alls we get is the agenda item, and that's.
And that's also false, there's a whole packet here of what's been submitted to you, Commissioner, you can tell things that are not true, but the proof is in the pudding.
Now, can you ask your employees at the county to fix your car for extra, for, for.
You're getting out of line here, let's move on.
Did, this, this person, actually, no, this person.
Call the question.
Director, an employee to fix their car who worked in.
Call the question.
Called it already for six, for fifteen, so I'm moving on to item sixteen.
No credibility, nothing that she comes through here.
Commissioner, you're being out of line and unruly.
You know what, that's fine, have me arrested, try me.
To approve the purchase of the crossing easement from the Youngstown Belt Railroad Company in the amount of sixteen thousand dollars.
You can do it.
Referencing parcel twenty-three B for the Western Reserve Greenway, part of the Great Ohio Lake to River Greenway in Trumbull County, Ohio, Phase Four, and to authorize Danny Malloy, President of the Board of Trumbull County Commissioners, to sign the crossing agreement and the administrative settlement on behalf of the Board of Commissioners.
Make a motion to approve.
Second that.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Um, on the next two items, they say that there's outside counsel that, um, reviewed everything, however, that outside counsel did not provide anything, um, to, in writing, that says that this was approved to form process and correctness. Um, we have absolutely nothing except for a little statement on our agenda and the word of someone from another board. So we should have something that says from this legal, this Roth, Blair, Roberts, Stress, Stress Field and Lodge, we should at least have something that says the foregoing document has been approved to a form process correctness, et cetera, so, and we have nothing, so for, for that reason, if, if it exists somewhere, I'd like to see it, but because I don't have it right now, I'm going to abstain.
Item number seventeen is to approve the in lieu program credit purchase agreement for the Western Reserve Greenway Bike Trail, Phase Four, Project ID nine nine eight zero four, located in Howland and Weathersfield Townships and Warren and Nile Cities, in the amount of two hundred eight thousand dollars, only twenty percent, forty-one thousand, six hundred is required for payment, and to authorize Danny Malloy, Board President, to sign on behalf of the Trumbull County Commissioners and to approve the transfer of funds necessary for this purchase.
A motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Again, because the oh-so-elusive outside counsel has not submitted anything, nor has anyone who brought this to the agenda, honestly, the fact is, this shouldn't have made it to our agenda, the clerk is supposed to make sure that things don't go on our agenda unless that is listed as an upload, she did not provide that, she was supposed to obtain that and give it to the Commissioners anytime something comes in, that is a requirement that was written by, uh, our county, and it's, it's absent, and it, it shouldn't be here until she has that, so it's no, it's, uh, I'm going to abstain because it might be out there, maybe she just didn't give it to us. So.
Motion passes.
Item number, item number eighteen, to establish the creation of the Women's Grant Fund, known as Fund Number One Forty-four, for use by the Trumbull County Adult Probation Department for specialized docket subsidy project funds for women's therapeutic docket.
A motion to approve.
Second that.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Item number nineteen is to authorize the planning commission to prepare and submit a pre-application to the Ohio Department of Development for the project year two thousand and twenty-four, C D B G Residential Public Infrastructure Grant Program, uh, B W twenty-four, one C S one, for a maximum amount not to exceed seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the proposed Pendleton Gilmer Sanitary Sewer Project, located in a low and moderate income consent decree area of Meadowbrook, located in Warren Township, and to authorize Danny Malloy, President of the Board, to sign and execute any and all documents related to the pre-application.
A motion to approve.
Second that.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Item number twenty is to accept maintenance bond number L two six nine zero nine three dash twenty-one eighty-four issued by Lexington National Insurance Corporation for nine sanitary lateral connections for low and moderate income households in the heat and shoot project area funded through the project year two thousand and twenty-two, C D B G Residential Public Infrastructure Grant Program and the American Rescue Plan Act, installed by TK Excavating. TK Excavating requested final payment for the completed work inspected and improved by the Trumbull County Sanitary Engineers Department. The maintenance bond is in the amount of twenty percent, fourteen thousand, seven hundred and seventy-four dollars of the final project cost, seventy-three thousand, eight hundred and seventy dollars, and is valid for a two, period of two years commencing July third, twenty, twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-four, and ending July twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-six.
Motion to approve.
Second that.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Um, because the bond paperwork that was sent to us is incomplete, it doesn't have the, um, it, it's missing the original contract date, and I emailed them and, um, I don't have, if they responded to me just recently this morning, I didn't get it, but it should have been submitted to us, uh, correctly, and I don't know how that'll affect things if it's audited not to have the paperwork complete. Um, I'm going to vote no, just because the, the, it's missing the date on what was attached to the agenda item.
Item number twenty-one is to authorize the renewal of the submitted citizens' participation policy for project year two thousand and twenty-four. The citizens' participation policy is a required element of the county's Community Development Block Grant Program. The Trumbull County Planning Commission is responsible for carrying out public outreach activities related to the C D B G program. The policy ensures that all persons living in Trumbull County have access to information pertaining to C D B G programs, particularly those programs that target low and moderate income persons. In addition, a detailed procedural process is defined within the policy for registering citizen complaints. This policy takes effect on September first, two thousand and twenty-four, for program year two thousand and twenty-four, and extends through August thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-five.
A motion to approve.
Second that.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Item twenty-two is to authorize the Trumbull County Planning Commission to submit a revolving loan fund Community Development Project Pre-Application dedicating up to two hundred thousand to the Ohio Department of Development, Office of Community Development, to use with the proposed Meadowbrook Sanitary Sewer Project Area Household Connections Activity, Warren Township, Census Track nine three three one, Block Group One, and to authorize Danny Malloy, President of the Board, to sign any and all documents required.
Motion to approve.
Second that.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Item twenty-three is a resolution authorizing expenditure for and responding, responding to or mitigating the public health emergency from American Rescue Plan Act funds, and this is for Gerard Multi-Generational Center. And on the next page, up at the top, Commissioners, whereas the Gerard Multi-Generational Center seeks to continue to meet the demand of the needs of, of the seniors that it serves, including continuing to provide health and wellness services, as well as community activities and events, and whereas to continue to meet the demands of the clientele, its services, Gerard Multi-Generational Center has requested a grant in the amount of thirty-four thousand, eight hundred and forty-four dollars, which will be used toward continuing its programming services, which directly benefits L M I senior citizens. So at the bottom, under number four, the project, um, a one-time grant to Gerard Multi-Generational Center is hereby authorized and shall be paid, paid for from ARPA funds in the amount of thirty-four thousand, eight hundred and forty-four dollars.
A motion to approve.
I'll second that.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Item twenty-four goes along with that to enter into an agreement between the Board of Trumbull County Commissioners and the Gerard Community Committee, Inc., doing business as Gerard Multi-Generational Center, as approved by ARPA Legal Counsel, to provide funds for the Gerard Multi-Generational Center to can use, continue serving the demands of the clientele it serves, as described in Exhibit A, and the Board of Trumbull County Commissioners allocates the sum of thirty-four thousand, eight hundred and forty-four dollars to the Gerard Multi-Generational Center.
A motion to approve.
I'll second that.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Item twenty-five is to adopt a resolution declaring the necessity of constructing the Steelwagon Road Water Improvements Project Number One dash W dash nineteen for the Trumbull County Combined Water District within the Trumbull County Combined Sewer District located in Weathersfield Township. And in the note, Thursday, September twelfth, two thousand and twenty-four, at seven p.m., is hereby fixed as the time in the McKinley Heights Fire Station, two 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 nine Gar, Garden Land Avenue, Niles, as the place for hearing of objections to or acceptance of project number one dash W dash nineteen.
A motion to approve.
I second the motion.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Item twenty-six is to accept the termination of Mr. William Coover, probationary, from the position of TV Inspector slash grouting assistant technician with the Trumbull County Sanitary, Sanitary Engineers Department, effective Wednesday, August seventh, two thousand and twenty-four.
A motion to approve.
Second the motion.
And discussion, Bob, I normally get, uh, something from you about these, I don't know if I missed it. I understand what the policy says and what you can do, I just like to, you know how like you sound usually are, but even if you give me, even if you give me something, I just, I know you're honest, yeah.
Basically, the only reason we want to terminate him is.
It's okay, yeah, I, I just wanna.
That just shows the daisies.
That's okay, I just like to see things before, thank you, I appreciate you bringing it with you and sharing it. Give it back. Thank you.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Item twenty-seven is to receive and place on file the June two thousand and twenty-four monthly operating slash financial report for Trumbull County Transit and the Western Reserve Transit Authority, as submitted by Mike Salamone, Administrator, Trumbull County Transit, and Diane Siskowick, Jerkovic, Senior Levy Administrator.
Motion to approve.
Second that. Second that.
Mr. Cantal Mesa?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco?
Yes.
Item twenty eight is to award a contract to Sexton and Associates Architects for preparing construction and bidding documents for the new four H Horse Building located at the Trumbull County Fairgrounds, eight nine nine Everett Hall Road, Cortland, in the amount of ten thousand, fifty dollars. The proposal has been reviewed and approved by the Prosecutor's Office.
Motion to approve.
I'll second that.
Mr. Cantal Mesa?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco?
Yes.
Madam Clerk, I'd like to make a motion to table number twenty nine and thirty. Those are the uh, School Resource Officer ones for Badger and Southington. The new contract is going into effect and they need to adjust the prices uh for, to adapt to the deputies, deputies' wages and insurance.
Take the motion and then you would have it seconded. Then there would be discussion about it. So if you.
He's making a motion.
Yeah, also engage in discussion. That's a very long.
Okay. You do it every day on every item, basically.
So the seconds.
I'll, I'll, I'll second it for discussion.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, the second would be me. No, no, because I was point of order. Okay, you're right.
Hey, Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Oh, well, discussion for the purpose of discussion, you said too. So um, one of the other things that I don't know if the um, the sheriff is watching, I do understand because I brought this up to, um, I think I was emailing um, Villanueva about this in the past. Um, there's one other thing that I'm hopeful that the, that they can do with their contracts to make sure that the costs are covered. And it's not just the personnel cost. Um, we, in the, in the language of the contract that, that is being approved, it says of the sheriff costs to provide necessary cruiser equipment, et cetera. Um, but that's not included in the cost. So what I would appreciate seeing, and I think the Board of Commissioners needs to kind of push back a little. And if they're going to revise their contract in the amounts, they also need to revise that in a fashion that reflects the depreciation for the vehicle. Because vehicles, um, they're, they're, uh, they depreciate and they probably have uh between a five and eight year life. Um, so you take that depreciated over the number of years and then divide it by the number of months. And we need to make sure that we as a county are not subsidizing the communities with the cost of that as well. That's what, what should happen. And I, I hope you guys were able to.
We discussed it at the workshop yesterday. There is no depreci, depreciation for the vehicle. The vehicle's parked there all day, so it's not moving.
Okay, so let me again explain, I'd, uh, you might need.
Otherwise, they would be trolling.
Or, okay, understand, it's not the mileage. Vehicles.
It actually is. It actually is. You can't, you can't say we're gonna charge for the depreciation of this vehicle that sits there. I, I, that makes no sense. And by the way, we're supposed to be working with communities and schools, not trying to gouge them.
These are townships. These are townships.
What we should be doing is making sure that the county is not subsidizing costs.
We're not subsidizing, it's the minimus.
Okay, what I'm going to explain this again. If you're not capable of understanding, I get that. But there is, but vehicles depreciate whether or not you're driving them very much. So uh, the value, the, the, there should be some type of recapture for the use of equipment, vehicle, and depreciation. So.
Again, I think we need to work with the schools, not gouge them and nickel and dime them at every chance.
Which is different than depreciation.
They're providing service. This is like saying that, this is like saying a judge should charge the guy because we chased him. And now you gotta pay the deputy back for the.
Actually, it's not because there's a contract that includes, if you read.
You go ask those school boards if they, if they want to pay.
You're interrupting me. Okay. So uh, i- if you look at the contract, it explicitly says the cruiser and equipment. And we need to determine what the appropriate depreciated cost is in order to calculate that by a year. It's just con, especially for a department that goes over budget every single year. They should be make sure that they're recapturing enough to cover their services in their contracts, which includes soft costs and vehicle. I'm just saying, if he wants to try, if Sheriff Monroe wants to try to make the budget, his overages a little bit better, he could do this because it would be the proper business thing to do.
We have funded the budget, Sheriff's Department, without any layoffs and without any interruption of service in the ten years that I've been here. So please stop with the misinformation and the lies.
I believe it's more like casting um pearls among swine because I, I, it's just like impossible um at this point.
I wish, I really wish you would channel your energy to doing good instead of evil. You'd be more like Superman than Lex Luthor.
Call the uh, the question and there's, call the question.
Okay, so for the motion to table, items twenty nine and thirty, uh, Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Mr. Cantal Mesa?
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco?
Yes.
And I'll skip down to item thirty one. To approve contract number four, zero, four, dash, two, three, dash, two, ten, between the Trumbull County Department of Job and Family Services and Job Works, Inc., doing business as Job Works Education and Training Systems, in an amount not to exceed four hundred forty one thousand, eight hundred and twenty dollars, to be paid from Temporary Assistance to Needy Families Comprehensive Case Management and Employment Program Funds. Agreement will be effective for the term June tenth, twenty twenty four through September thirtieth, twenty twenty four.
Motion to approve.
Second that.
Mr. Cantal Mesa?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco?
Um, because they are viol, violating an Attorney General opinion that says that they can only communicate is with, with vendors before the award. If they uh completed a vendor, developed a vendor notification list um to public, publicize bidding opportunities and they did not develop a vendor notification list, they actually just have a, a few, a few vendors who have requested that bid packages be sent to them, um, no, because it doesn't follow process.
Okay, that can, concludes our regularly scheduled agenda item business for today. Does anybody have anything for the go to Trumbull County? Would like to be recognized?
I do, I do want to say that uh, there's a lot of people who are concerned about the storms uh last night and branches down and it ended up um with power outages. And we don't have any updates as Commissioners yet from uh, the uh, people putting, restoring the power. Uh, I spoke to Director Hickey and as soon as he gets an email, check on his um, social media page for Trumbull County E M A and he's going to list uh, the times and updates relative to restoring power. So I've had a lot of people reaching out to me since yesterday asking about that and I just wanted to put that out there. Probably lead it to.
I did.
Anybody else have anything? Mr. Salamone?
Good morning, Mike.
Good morning, Commissioners. Thank you for passing. I was doing some, thank you for passing uh my resolution for the month.
Name first.
And I would like to.
Name first.
Mike Sal, my Trumbull County Transit Administrator, sorry. Um, I would like to uh give you an updated report. The one I gave you that I, I turned in, I have some new information. So I just want to give you an updated report.
Thank you.
Thank you for submitting it properly too. It was nice to have everything together. So if this is updated from what we voted on, then we have to put it on next week or something?
The information's there.
Okay.
It's just, um, there's something different with the financials, but I do have financials.
Okay, because I saw that that was on there.
For the microphone.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, so the very first page is Diane's information, which she gave, she passed out yesterday. It's the financial for the Trumbull County Transit. So, starting with the operating data, data for Trumbull County Transit, trips for June of twenty twenty four were three thousand six. And for twenty twenty three, they were three thousand, one hundred thirty. Total year to date in June was nineteen thousand, five ninety four. Total year to date uh in twenty twenty three was eighteen, seven twenty nine. A breakdown of the trips are at sixty five and older or eleven thousand, this is year to date, eleven thousand, five forty three. Under sixty five is one thousand, three hundred and thirty six. For a total of senior trips of twelve thousand, eight seventy nine and disabled is six thousand, seven hundred fifteen. So as we can see, the seniors are definitely the big group that we're transporting here.
So, I'm sorry, Michael, seniors and disabled account for eighteen thousand, a little over eighteen thousand. And then non-senior and disabled are um, not even fifteen hundred, correct?
Yeah.
Okay, that's, I just want to make sure.
So uh, with these numbers, uh, in twenty twenty three, we did thirty six thousand, eight hundred and fifty four trips. So presently, if we keep these numbers going the way they are, we will do approximately thirty nine thousand, one hundred and eighty eight trips for this year. So we're definitely increasing our ridership. Um, in regards to extra funding, uh, as you know, um, Comfort Caravan received extra funding and I had just found out last Friday that they have run out of the funding for the Healthy Aging Grant. That they had twenty five thousand that Diane did. So, um, let's see. So these are some extra trips that he's been doing, that Comfort Caravan's been doing.
I have a question for you.
Sorry.
I have a question.
Right in.
Um. So for that program, how old do they have to be?
Sorry.
How old do they have to be to um have the services?
Sixty and over?
I believe sixty five, but Diane, do you know?
How old do they have to be to have the services that he just described?
For healthy aging.
Yeah.
Oh.
And how old is it um with W R T A?
They're seniors, I, well, depends. They've got two different groups. One, I believe, is sixty two, one is sixty five, depending on what you're asking.
Okay, so if we were to have uh, a W R T A service and joined and we're using them, would that cause us to def, to shift some of the need to the other system?
I, I don't, I mean, I know where you're coming from.
Yeah.
Diane, see, the senior levy is sixty. So our senior levy is sixty.
Right, so there would be a gap, there would be a small.
There could be a small gap.
But we'd be able to save.
Yeah.
Okay, just wanted to be clear.
Okay, so that's my update with the Trumbull County Transit. I'm gonna switch gears now to the W R T A. And this report ba, uh, is basically uh, from not, from the beginning till July, or yeah, July. And I did get this report at the uh, City Council meeting on the twenty fourth of August. Okay, so we have not, both systems, I have not had any complaints at all in regard to complaints. So we're doing great with that.
I'll have to check the log at our office too. I don't, I have never not received one in over a year and a half. And I don't think our office has either.
Yeah, I mean, I have on books, we have, I believe, three or four total for the year, complaints. So we're doing really well with complaints at this point. Um, in fact, um, I received a phone call from Carl Clemens this morning and, yeah, I know.
You love Carl.
Yeah, right. And um, he was talk, he was talking with staff members at Dialysis. And he said, things are going great with, between the vendors and the dialysis with transportation and they're working with them. That's all. I mean, this is just, I mean, great news to be, want to be passing this good news on. So going back to the W R T A. Uh, the seventy three, which is the west, year to date, has done two thousand, seven hundred twenty one trips. The Elm Road, number seventy four, has done four thousand, one hundred seventy seven trips. Now, we don't fund this other trip, uh, this other group, but the Warren Express, year to date, has done over eighty nine thousand trips. That's one of their best routes they have.
That is their best route.
And also, that has been reliable. And whenever a transportation system has something that's reliable, that never fails, it's not there one day, gone the next, that makes the ridership increase. So that could be affecting our numbers because the consistency hasn't been there. But that's, that's one of the reasons for that.
And there are definitely people transferring from the Warren Express to somebody, the other two or vice, vice versa. And where my office is at, I'd look out and I see anywhere from three to five to ten people standing out there. Oh, so, um, so and going further with these routes. Um, going with the first route, which was eight, I mean, first month, a complete month. The west did six hundred and fifty five trips and in June, they did nine hundred and five trips. So it was a continuous increase, not a lot, but a continuous increase over time. And the Elm Road, Elm Road Route in March did six thousand four. And there can, they went up to one thousand, three hundred and eighty as of June. Now, another question you may be asking me, what the, what is, do they do last year? On an average, the um, west did about fifteen hundred trips. Whereas the Elm Road Route did about two thousand, twenty one hundred trips a month on an average. So we're off that pace a little bit, but if we keep, if they keep increasing.
The reason why is because of the.
Right, if they keep increasing, we can go on from there. Um, so finally, I wanted to go over the financials because I did receive some invoices from W R T A last week. So uh, year to date, for the three invoices, April, May, and June, it's gonna cost us fifty three thousand, seven hundred and eighty four dollars. This, this is the very last page.
Yes.
Fifty three thousand, seven eighty four. And that will leave us uh, two hundred and eighty four thousand, five seventy three in the bank to continue running the service. So, in saying that, I do have a couple more comments um, that I would like to make. Um, so. So right now, we have approximately nine months left of the service, give or take. So with its board's approval, I would like to uh, talk with Dean Harris, W R T A, as well as City of Warren, live there. And let's do, can we do a public meeting maybe in the next two months to figure out how we're gonna continue running the service? Because that's gonna keep this service running. If people know this is gonna continue to run, they'll start riding it. But if they don't, they may slow down. So that's, you know, I would like to, so I'm asking the board, would you mind if I?
Especially before fall. That's the best time to do it.
So if I.
Absolutely.
We have a time, maybe like Tuesday, Wednesday after five o'clock, two o'clock.
I think that would be good, but I, I, I think it should be ear, earlier the better because that once.
When you're saying earlier the better.
Sooner, sooner rather than later.
Time wise?
Yeah.
Yeah, I understand that too. So.
Have we submitted the application for the fifty three ten yet or is that not?
Um, the letter of interest for the fifty three ten will, uh, is supposed to come to us September.
Okay.
So sometime in September, I have to submit the letter of interest. Once I receive it from O D F and I receive it. And I believe it's between October and November, we submit the application.
Okay.
That's when that is.
Yeah, I, I would welcome that meeting with the City of Warren and we can get ahead of everything, so.
Right, so if we get ahead of this, that'd be great. All right, that's number one. The other thing I would just like to bring up is um, I've talked in the past about, I, I keep calling it a one-stop shop, but it's through Neo Ride. It's actually called Easy Connect is what they call it. One of the, one of the areas that they have, um, that I've uh been talking with people about, they will have um, a customer service software. And we can use the software for one year. Now, in regards to us, we've only had several complaints, so do I really need it? Firstly, for me, no, at this point, I'm just saying no. But I did ask the question, could I open this up to the Commissioners, because this is actually, you, the Commissioners have joined NeoRide with me. It's not like WRTA where they're a single, you know, join it. So I'm having a meeting tomorrow with the people from NeoRide to verify if we can do it and get a cost after the first of the year. The first year is free. So if the Commissioners are on board with this and we decide to do it
I think it's a fantastic idea, Mike, and I think that's what we've been lacking for a long time, is central dispatching. Because they're calling our vendors, and then it's getting kind of haywire. But if there's one central hub, if there's one point person, or one point
Right.
place, I should say.
Yeah.
That would be enormously beneficial, I think.
Where we're looking at to do, to begin this, I've, when I've talked with the vendor, I said do us last, because we're completely different than everybody else. So right now, they're looking at the last quarter of this year, first quarter of next year, to get us started with this.
Good news.
When I find out tomorrow about the customer service, I will let you know. I'll send you an email, you know, because what I was told was we may have to purchase, we may have to do a little purchasing, so I'll find all that out at that time. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mike.
Martha Yoder, Trumbull County Auditor, I just want to remind people, the public and the Commissioners as well, that we are at the last two days of the State of Ohio Tax Holiday. This year was expanded in time as well as some other things. It does end eleven fifty-nine tomorrow night. Items up to five hundred dollars can be tax exempt, so if there's a, maybe a medium-sized purchase that you're considering, this would be a great time to do it. I know some folks were doing home improvements, and they kind of have been to Lowe's and other places. So that expansion was for the amount as well. Also, it's not just, you can have several items up to five hundred on your bill. So like if you have an item for four hundred, an item for three hundred, an item for, for, for five hundred, they can all be on the same bill, and you still have the tax exempt. Another big change this year that I think is really important and good, and good for our, our local businesses, particularly our restaurants, is that Dining In, which is usually taxable, is not taxable during the tax holiday, and so this is a good time. I know that the pandemic, even though we're a few years out now, the pandemic sort of got people in the habit of doing takeout rather than dining in, and dining in is a fun experience. Matter of fact, I did that last night with a friend and had a wonderful salad. So I just wanted to remind people about this and have them take advantage of it. Obviously, we lose a little tax money from this, but we also gain, our businesses gain, and that's good for Trumbull County. Thank you.
Thank you.
I do have something else that I wanted to talk about. Dozens of people have reached out to me as a result of the human trafficking and sex trafficking raid that was done in Hubbard. It, that three-C spa that was
Commissioner, we're not gonna go in this direction with that. You're not gonna use the time of the public to slander someone that beat you in an election. We know which direction you're going with this.
I know that you said
And my opinion on this too is, you were the one, if there was any activity going on in Trumbull County with human trafficking, that probably warned everybody out there and interfered with the law enforcement investigation. And any police officer will tell you, if there's something going on, you don't go to the public and say, here's what's going on here, and we're gonna catch you, we're gonna catch you. People disappear and go other places. So you probably injured some women's lives out there while you appear grandstanding about what you believe is going on.
Okay, I'm just going to say that, again, and, and on the, on, on the record, because I was criticized before by, by the media for making
You're interrupting, you're interfering with an investigation, open investigation. You have been since day one.
Whoa, I've been
You think things are still gonna go on in activity if you're here pointing it out to everybody?
Let me know when you're done talking. Let me know when you're done talking, and I can talk and try to make a decent
And you were making base allegations. Owner of the building and the owner of the building is also, he's been working with the all investigative unit since day one. You're wrong.
He caused
He just doesn't go and stand on a platform and say, look at me, look at me. He works behind the scenes the way you're supposed
So he's, he has caused the social media page for them to be changed. He was advocating and giving out vouchers for services there.
Nothing to do with county.
But I, but, but luckily, if I were to talk without the, the previous interruption, I would be fine. So what I, what I was saying is I want to say thank you to those who were giving the tips to me, to law enforcement
Including the building owner that worked with law enforcement.
Into the task force, who admitted that he's never communicated with them, but I have
You're absolutely wrong. Go ask the all investigative unit, who did they get a tip from?
All right.
Who, who, who was one of the first
All right, it was, we are concerned, it was interesting that someone might have been tipped off the day before, the one, the people weren't there
How could they not be when you're up here telling the whole world?
Not, I absolutely said nothing, and have continued and
You said nothing.
No, I have continued this summer. Over the last few weeks, I had more
We're talking about women's lives, and you're laughing about it on social media yesterday. All happy
Can you shut up and let me talk? You're interrupting every
We're gonna adjourn the meeting. We're gonna adjourn the meeting. This is off the rails.
So I want to talk as a member of the public.
Make a move and do adjourn.
I'll second that.
Mr. Cantalamaesa? Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco?
No, and it's disgusting that you guys are not